It is now seven o'clock. We will begin the October 10th Town Council meeting.
Hey, can you pledge allegiance?
Absolutely.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you'd all just stand standing for a moment, just to take a moment of silence to honor all the lives that have been lost in conflict this past week. Okay, we are starting out with presentations and recognitions, and Jocelyn Kennedy is up first for our Executive Director of the Farmington Libraries, for our Introductions to the Town Council, your first visit with us.
Thanks.
Welcome.
You stand over here, right?
Yes. I'm going to be very official here.
Very official. It's delightful to meet you all. I'm Jocelyn Kennedy. As Chair Thomas said, I am the new Executive Director over at the Farmington Libraries. I'm delighted to be here. I arrived on September 5th. I came to, I'm actually a resident of Unionville. I've lived, owned property here since 2014. I came here to the library from Harvard Law School, which is my most recent employer. Before that, I was at the University of Connecticut School of Law Library. So I've been in the area for quite some time. I've been in Connecticut since 2011. I'm delighted to be here. I'm happy to answer any questions you have about the library. I thought a couple of fun facts you might want to know about last year, and I'll have more to say in the spring, I hope. We had 701 live programs at the library last year, so in-person programs that were attended by over 15,000 of our residents, which I think is pretty phenomenal for a small town and a small library, right? We have 15,000 residents who have library cards. So again, I think that's pretty phenomenal for our community. And believe it or not, more items are still physically checked out of the library than digital. So a lot of people think libraries have gone digital. Last year, 259,000 items were checked out of the library, and an additional 48,000 digital items were checked out. So people are still using our library. They come frequently. I invite you to come anytime in the morning. It's amazing. Families there with their young children. At 2:00, the high school students come in, and in the evening, we see a lot of members of our adult community. So it's really a very vibrant part of our community. I hope you'll come visit us.
Thank you. It is, and it's the transition over the number of years from the traditional library, where you're just going to take out books, to the incredible amount of digital content you have now. And the other thing a lot of people don't know, what you can borrow, things like passes to different local libraries or to some of the museums around town.
Telescopes, microscopes, we have it all. Tents, if you want to go camping, we've got it at the library. So I look forward to working with all of you. Thank you so much.
Does anyone have any questions before Jocelyn? Okay, thank you. You got an easy one tonight.
Great, thanks a lot. Take care.
We're only in public, right? We have item D.
No public hearing.
No public hearing. Item D, new item, it's done. Moving on to item F, public comment. We will ask people to state your name and address, and try and keep your comments limited to five minutes in consideration of those who would like to speak past you. So I will first ask anyone here in the audience amongst us if they would like to say any words. Seeing none, is there anyone online with their hand up?
We do have one person with their hand up.
Is their first name Jay?
Their first name is Jay.
Go ahead.
So we have Jay Tulin.
Jay, you're on.
Can you guys hear me?
We can.
Okay, so it may not be a surprise to you that I do have some comments in regards to the recent events in Israel. I appreciate the fact that you had the moment of silence. I'll try to make this as brief as I can. I know you only allow a few minutes. So I do, I do have a few comments. For starters, it's notable to point out and remind you all that it's appreciated that the Town Council, CJ in particular, signed the Mayor's United Against Anti-Semitism pledge a few years ago, and equally important, or more importantly, adopted the International Holocaust Remembrance Alliance definition of anti-Semitism, and was one of the first communities in Connecticut to do so. And I think it's important to keep that in mind. It's occurred to me that there may be next steps. I've been looking for a next step, and sadly, I do believe I know what that is. Earlier in the year, the Biden administration put in place a comprehensive strategy to combat anti-Semitism, and one of the things is local communities, local governments, educating local communities. So sadly, I believe that, I guess my ask for next steps, or what I would, you know, what I would like to see happen would be the Town Council taking some kind of stand, standing in support of Israel or anti-Semitism. The education, I'm not sure exactly how this would work out. Some kind of public show would be even better. I don't really have something specific in mind, so I'd be satisfied with a statement in support of Israel or anti-Semitism based on the things above, the International Holocaust Remembrance Alliance definition of anti-Semitism, and the Mayor's United Against Anti-Semitism, which are great things that the Town Council saw fit to acknowledge. But sadly, my belief is the next step would be just what I said, some kind of public statement, you know, educating the people of Farmington and just showing the Town Council's concern and outrage for the events that took place. I could make this statement a lot more complicated. You all know I'm Jewish. You don't need to be Jewish to get this. So, you know, I appreciate your time. That's basically all I have to say, and hopefully I can, the community can look forward to some kind of statement from the Town Council in support of what I just said. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jay. I appreciate that. Others for a public comment?
There are no other hands.
Okay. Seeing no other public comments, we will move on to reading of the minutes.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes of September 12th, 2023, regular Town Council meeting.
Second. We have a motion to second. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the reading of the minutes of September 19th, 2023, special Town Council meeting.
Second. We have a motion to second. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Reading of communications and written appeals, do we have any?
Uh, no.
Okay. Moving on to report of the committees. I, one, 1928 Building Committee.
We met earlier today. There was a redesign for the front vestibule, so it was carried out and passed by the sitting members, so it changes the look of two side doors with a lot less glass and actually matches more of the facade of the current building. And we have our next meeting next month, I believe, November 14th.
Great. All right, thank you. Farmington High School Building Committee.
At our last meeting, we certified the final plans and the project manuals. We continue to be on budget and on time. And as I've stated in the past, you can get any additional information at FHSbuildingproject.org. Our next meeting is October 18th at 5:00 in the current FHS library.
Great, thank you. Green Efforts Committee.
Nothing to report.
Land Acquisition Committee.
Nothing new to report.
Race Equality Task Force.
And nothing new to report.
Okay. Moving on to item J, report of the Council Chair and Liaisons. Let's start with me as the Council Chair. A number of things have been going on since our last meeting. Most recently, the girls' soccer game. It was Pinkout Day. And, uh-oh. Keith has his...
Freshly worn.
There you go. You can still buy them, I'm sure.
You can buy this one.
Yeah. When you left, it was what, still nothing, nothing?
It was zero, zero.
Zero.
And Berlin's supposed to be a good team, and we have a new coach, so they're doing their best.
All right. So we're holding off on that. And as you'll notice, a few of us are actually wearing pink today because this is breast cancer wear month. Also, we had an honoree in town a couple of weeks ago, Joseph De Palma, who was a World War II veteran, and we had the French Foreign Consulate come up from New York City to give him award to the French Legion of Honor for his actions during World War II. He is 98 years old. He was wearing his Army jacket with his pass medals on it, which still fit him. He stood and sat down no less than four times when the flag came in, when the diplomat came in to shake hands, and certainly seemed no less for the wear. He was in great spirits. He had some fantastic stories. He actually had a helmet there that he had acquired overseas, a German military helmet, with, painted on it every town that he had been in while he was there, all throughout Luxembourg, France, and Germany. But it was a very nice event. Jeremy Robert was the French Foreign Diplomat who was there to give the award. So that was a great event. We also had the 150th anniversary of St. James Church on Mountain Road. Great event. They had their bishop come in to say some words and to hold a mass, and that was a very nice event also. So we've been a little busy, and as you see, there are a lot of signs out in the streets now. They'll only be there till the weekend after the election, so don't worry. All the political signs only last for about a month here in Farmington. We're pretty good at that. Other than that, it's been a lot more to come in the next few months, so stay tuned. I will now move on to Conservation and Inland Wetlands.
So Conservation and Inland Wetlands had their meeting last Wednesday. With all the rain that we got, among other things, they were scheduled to discuss storm drainage improvements in different parts of town, so along Mountain Spring Road and embankment repairs on Dorset Lane. Also, the Snowberry Farmington West Estate sidewalk had to be postponed and rescheduled, actually, due to rain, and that's rescheduled for October 12th.
Great, thank you. Board of Education.
So Board of Ed met on September 18th. The principals reported smooth openings at each school. The Assistant Superintendent has reported that they have, or I should say, they provided an overview of the S R three funding. He reported that we are entering the last year of COVID relief grants. We have a deadline of September 2024, and we're moving toward, forward to be in good shape by moving items off the grant, including staffing. They also voted unanimously to approve the Farmington School Administrators Association contract with, which I'm sure Kathy is here to discuss later.
Great, thank you. Item four, Bicycle and Trails Advisory Committee. Again, talking about some of the new things coming through town. I think we're actually closer to getting that water fountain we've been working on for a while, and just again, looking for more safe routes throughout town to get us to the trails. Economic Development Commission.
Yes, the EDC hosted their Fall Business Breakfast on Wednesday, September 20th, at the Farmington Polo Club. The keynote speaker was Mr. Jagdish Dalal, who discussed forces of change that affect business and government. The meeting was well-attended, and Mr. Dalal answered many questions from the audience. And the next EDC meeting will be November 8th at 5:30 PM.
Great, thank you. Farmington Historic District Commission.
Thank, oh.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's you.
Oh. I jumped in. You this time. I didn't skip you this time. That was the last time.
Thank you very much. Just a couple of things to share. A certificate and an application was approved for a, for a one-story addition to a home located at Two Mountain Spring Road, and also an application was approved for replacement of a front door at 14 High Street. I'd like to thank the folks in the, in the Historic Village who continue to work with the commission to make sure that the village is beautiful, so I encourage anyone who's doing some work in the village to, to check in with the commission to make sure we keep the village beautiful. Also, the Town Planning and Zoning Commission forwarded a positive referral of the expansion report to the commission for the Historic Village. And also, our next meeting is going to be next Tuesday, the 17th, at 5:00 PM, right here. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Housing Authority.
Nothing to report.
All right. Human Relations Commission.
That's me. The Human Relations Commission met on September 21st, and they gave an overview of the disabled... I can't speak tonight, I'm sorry. I've had too much coffee. The Disabled Voter Month events, including a program aimed at low vision. They also set a committee for Human Services Day in December.
Great, thank you. Library Board.
Library Board met September 20th. Beyond the new director, who we met tonight, the library has been having a very difficult time with the amount of rain, as we all have. The inches and inches of rain that have come down this fall has flooded certain sections of the library. Jocelyn's second day on the job, she was holding a big bucket up in one of the offices to collect some of that water. They're doing a really good job mitigating it, and they have a plan to repair the roof drains on top of the library, so nothing for us to do other than keep the library in their thoughts until, in our thoughts until the drains are fixed. That was the biggest thing. Their next meeting is Wednesday, the 18th.
So clearly, the new director is a hands-on director.
Yeah. I mean, I was going to say to her, I mean, having spoken with her a few times, I have a really good feeling about her as the right person for that library, or both libraries, I should say. And again, her second day on the job, rolled up her sleeves, was standing on a desk, holding a bucket up. Maybe this is a compliance issue for HR, obviously. But, but yeah, it was really, like, got in into the job and, and, and rolled up her sleeves and helped out.
Great. Town Planning and Zoning.
Town Planning and Zoning. It was a busy meeting, but nothing really to report beyond, there continues to be discussion on the Affordable Housing Program, as I've talked about before. Their next meeting is tomorrow night. Shannon, our Town Planner, has said that October is so packed, there was no room for any other meetings, or no, no other agenda items. So October's going to be busy for TBZ. I assume that means the rest of the year will be as well.
Great, thank you. Unionville Village Historic District Commission, sorry.
Yes. Nothing new to report.
Okay, nah. Okay, UBI.
Also, nothing new to report.
All right. WPCA.
Our meeting is tomorrow night, and I know we probably have a lot of water and stuff, but nothing has come across the radar before the meeting as an issue, so everything should be running fine.
Great. Any other liaisons I missed? Seeing none. Report of the Town Manager.
You have the written report in front of you. Just briefly, we're going to have a public ceremony on Veterans Day at 11:00 in front of the Veterans Memorial Monument at the Town Hall, and that's 11:00 on Saturday, November 11th. Tour of the Farmington High School construction site. If any of the Town Council members are interested in going up to the building and touring the facility as it's progressing, give us a call in my office. And the ONG has said that they'll give a tour to any of the council people, so I'll coordinate. So if anyone's interested in that...
Want to hand down right now?
Sure.
If anyone's interested in getting the tour in the house.
Everyone?
There you go.
Okay, I'll coordinate. All right, great. Bulky Waste Collection, the next bulk waste collection will begin Monday, October 16th, and will be picked up on your normal collection date during the week of October 16th through October 20th. And you can look on the website on the Highway Department to see what you can put out there, but it's the night before on your regular collection day. And just that, we met the new library director, and she seems great, so we're really excited to have her part of the town. And the other thing that I wanted to talk briefly about is our town-owned farmland. As you know, the town leases six tenants, farmers, each year. Due to the record rainfall, they, all our farmers have had some struggles. We receive approximately $16,000 a year. I was wondering if the council would be interested in waiving the fees for the farmers this year because of what has happened. We've done that in the past when we've had some significant issues. I think it would be very helpful to our farmers. So I'm looking for some consensus if everyone would be willing to do that for this year's lease fees.
Yes, and it's been an incredibly difficult year. Multiple floods. We had our 200-year rain just recently, so I think this would not be out of question to...
If you go onto Sub Edge Farms Facebook page, you'll see the amount of water they've gotten, they've reported each time, and they've had a tremendous loss of agriculture and livestock.
Right.
And that's just one of...
And I don't know if you saw, the Pogston Farm was in the Hartford Current over the weekend, and so they were on, I think on the front page, either on the front page of Connecticut or the Hartford Current. So, okay, I'm sure they'll be grateful for that.
Everyone's good with that?
Yes.
Do we need to take an action? Form of a motion right now, or?
I don't... I think consensus is fine. Yeah, okay, great. And that's it for my Town Manager's report.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the Town Manager's report.
Second. We have a motion to second. Any conversation or questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Okay, item L, appointments. I do not believe we have any this evening. Okay, moving on to item M, old business. Having none. Item N, new business number one. Before we get in, I think we might have some refusing themselves?
I'll be recusing myself from this one, so...
Okay, you want to go sit out there?
Sure.
Agenda item N1, make a motion to approve on proposed contract between the Farmington Administrators and Supervisors Association and the Board of Education.
Do we have a second? Second. We have a motion to second. Any... Actually, could you...
This agreement was filed with the Town Clerk on September 19th. In accordance with Section 10, 153D of the Connecticut General Statute, the agreement takes effect unless it's rejected by the Town Council at a regular or special meeting within 30 days of the date it's been filed with the Town Clerk. If the council takes no action, the contract is deemed approved 30 days after it's filed with the Town Clerk. The highlights of the contract, I think Superintendent Greeter's here, and also Scott is, I think, on Zoom to go through the highlights of the contract. Is it going to be Scott, Kathy, or you?
Scott's going to vote for it if I'm here.
Okay, great. Good, all right. And Kat, I think you're going to put Scott on, or?
Good evening. Can everyone hear me?
Yeah, like your office.
Oh, thanks. Thanks, it's my mobile office. I appreciate that. Thanks for having me tonight. Appreciate everyone taking time to discuss the Farmington Administrators' contract. We had a successful negotiation this summer with our FASIA representatives, along with our Board Negotiations Committee chaired by Christine Arnold, Andrea Sabinski, Patty Boy Williams, and our Chair Liz Fitzsimmons sat on the committee as well. As you can see in the details in your packet there, the contract has, has included salary changes, which, which started with a step adjustment in the first year, followed with a 2.5% for year one, 2.75 in the second year, and a 3% increase for the '26-'27 school year. Due to the step adjustment, administrators will not move steps during the '24-'25 year. The insurance remained the same for the three years, and I'll get a little bit more into that in a few moments. And then the additional change as regards to benefits was increases to the annuity plan over a three-year period of $250, $250, and then $300 in the final year. You know, I, I want to highlight our administrators here in Farmington. Statewide, we rank 152 out of 166 in general administration, meaning that we have a small amount of administrators who are, who are carrying quite a heavy load. I think the, the contract agreement that's being presented tonight does a nice job of, of remaining, keeping Farmington towards the top of our, of our area in Hartford County, while also keeping in mind our fiscal responsibility to the community. Again, this contract is set to commence on July 1st, 2024, and will take us for a three-year period. At this time, I'll pause, and if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Any questions from the council? I think no questions. Anything else you want to add?
No, just from my end, just want to thank you again for your support. Looking forward to continued work together as we head into the springtime. We have our FPSEU negotiations, so we'll have another one coming forward, along with our M&amp;J bus contract is also coming up this year as well. So I'll be working with the Board Negotiations Committee on both of those contracts and deciding our next steps there. So other than that, again, thank you for all your support. We really appreciate it from the board's perspective.
Thank you, Scott. Appreciate you coming.
Thank you.
Thanks, Scott.
Kathy, anything you'd like to...
Thank you.
No, I just, I'm impressed that Scott has joined us. He's just getting back from a trip from his mobile office. Just really appreciative of the collaborative negotiations we have with our administrators and the Board of Education, and just appreciates everyone, appreciate everyone's hard work, and thank all of you for your support.
Thank you. And we do appreciate the fact that you're 152 out of 166. Keeping those numbers down, that's always helpful when we get to the overall budget negotiations, so thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Thank you.
Okay, seeing none. We have a motion to second. On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously.
Agenda item N2.
We can have Keith come back in.
I know, sorry. Forgot you were gone.
Ready?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to accept a $20,000 donation from the Shepherd family of Farmington to assist in the purchase of a Dial-A-Ride minivan, and to accept a reoccurring donation from the Shepherd Family Foundation for the upgrades of the Dial-A-Ride van.
Second. We have a motion to second.
The Shepherd family of Farmington has generously offered an initial $20,000 donation to assist in the purchase of a Dial-A-Ride minivan. Approval of this motion will also accept future reoccurring donations. Based on our donation policy, any donation that exceeds $10,000 must be approved by the donation. We are very grateful to the Shepherd family for this donation and future donations. And Marcy Shepherd's here with Nancy right now, and we'd like to say thank you so much for the donation. It would be wonderful for our Dial-A-Ride program.
Thank you very much. It is really a tremendous help and asset to the community, so we appreciate you doing this.
My pleasure.
Thank you.
Marcy, you never stop. I've served the FCC with you, and you still keep on giving, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. We have a motion to second. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Go figure, you're approved, accepting money. Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Agenda item N3, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the attached resolution authorizing the Town Manager to execute an application for the state financial assistance with the State of Connecticut Department of Economic and Community Development for the Small Town Economic Assistance Program, steep grant.
Second. We have a motion to second.
I'm sure you've probably seen it in the paper, but the town was recently awarded a $500,000 grant from the State of Connecticut Department of Community and Economic Development, the steep grant for the installation of a sidewalk on Meadow Road in Farmington. The sidewalk will begin at the intersection of New Britton Avenue and Meadow Road and will continue to Plainville Avenue. This location was chosen because it will connect roughly 165 homes with the Westwoods Upper Elementary School and the Farmington Canal Heritage Trail, as well as many local businesses. And we put it in the manager's report last month, if you remember, that we were applying. The state turned it over very quickly, so this is, we're really pleased that we were able to get the grant. I thank my staff who turned it around very quickly because they, they announced that the, there was going to be a grant, and they didn't give you very much time to apply for it, but we did put it together. And this is part of our process of trying, as CJ was saying, to connect our, our neighborhoods, to get our neighborhoods to our rails-to-trail system. And this is a really big neighborhood that will get to the trail system.
Yeah, great, thank you. And truly, this was a late moment ad coming in, so thank you to Kathy, you and your entire staff for doing such a tremendous job of getting this in. Sometimes with different grants, it is the town or entity who can quickly move and put in their application who actually gets the funding. And we in Farmington, and particularly with Kathy's staff, does a tremendous job of turning these over. So the town itself is a great beneficiary of this. And to bring more people, was it 167 homes?
Yeah, I think that's the answer, yeah.
That are now going to have access on sidewalks to get to the Rails-to-Trails, where they would be walking, they would be in the street. So, thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Just one other. Are any other steep grants available for other parts of town?
Usually, they're, they're once a year, or this one was twice a year, so when they come up again, the, the steep grant was also for the Farmington Village sidewalks, that's where we got that one from. So, you know, this one was for this sidewalk, and the bicycle committee is working on a plan to look at all the different neighborhoods and we're just trying to clip them off as we go along. This steep grant was nice because it didn't have a lot of different restrictions for economic development, so sidewalks fit right into it. So sometimes they don't, but this one actually did, so.
Are the criteria depending on the steep grant for like specific, like if you are connecting businesses to residents, how does that work?
It's, it's basically an economic development grant, but occasionally, it depends on what they do on different times, what they ask for. So we have gotten various steep grants for various things. The last couple we've gotten for, have been for sidewalks, because they, I think they've broadened what you're allowed to get steep grants for. But in the past, we've done other things for the steep grant, so it really depends on what that steep grant application has asked for. So as they've been lately, we've been doing sidewalks, because it seems like that's what people are looking for, and that's why we've been getting them.
My son has, sorry, go ahead.
We did the pickleball.
Right.
And that was one of them, too.
I remember that. Yeah. I was just wondering, because, you know, in certain parts of town, it's, it's really hard. Sometimes there's a sidewalk, sometimes there's not, and people like to jog or walk around. And my son has this idea that he's going to ride his bicycle. He's at IAR now, and there's no way you're crossing the highway. But, I mean, there, if there is an opportunity, I'm sure that we take it, but it'd just be nice to have something realistic.
Yeah, and that's, and that's basically what the bicycle committee is looking for right now, is that, again, that because we have such Route 4 and Route 10, they're very busy roads in town, one of the objectives are really is that we have a trail system that you can basically get almost anywhere in town if you can get to the trail system. So the whole objective of the bike committee and trail committee is to try to find any kind of neighborhoods that don't have access to a sidewalk that will get you to the trail